Welcome, everybody. The time is 7:05. Yes, 7:05, and I'm calling to order first a public hearing, amending the code of the Borough of Westchester, specifically Chapter 81 titled "Plastic Bag and Plastic Straw Regulations", Section 82- ID1-2, to add a definition for takeout or delivery food; Section 81-3, to make it clear that the prohibition for single-use plastic carryout bags applies to bags used for takeout and delivery orders; Section 81-5, to not require commercial establishments to charge a 10-cent fee for single-use plastic carryout bags used for takeout or delivery food. Mr. Metrick?
Thank you, President Stefano. So the this is an ordinance that has been drafted and is amending the section, as mentioned, that governs the regulations for the use of single-use plastic bags and straws in the Borough of Westchester. I have two exhibits that I'd like to enter into the record. B.C. 1 is a proof of publication published in the Daily Local News on March 1, 2022 detailing this ordinance, and Board Exhibit Number 2, which is an email dated February 17, 2022, from Jill Kirk to the Chester County Law Library and the Daily Local News providing proposed ordinance for public inspection. Generally speaking, this is a cleanup of the plastic bag and straw regulations, creating a definition for takeout and delivery food, clarifying certain prohibitions, and also allowing an exemption for, from the the 10-cent fee for compliant bags in the event of takeout or delivery food use of bags. And at this point in time, it would be appropriate to take any questions from members of council.
Any questions from anybody? Okay. Comment? Other comment?
And seeing no questions, are there any questions on this ordinance from members of the public? Seeing none, it would be in order for council to take a motion to consider adoption of this ordinance.
Mr. Stefano?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the amended code for the Borough of Westchester, Chapter 81, for plastic bags and plastic straw regulations.
So motion on the floor by Mr. Flynn?
I would like to second that.
Ms. Vaccaro seconds? Any discussion? Comment? Okay. Mr. Metrick, I believe you can call the question.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey is absent. And Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Motion carries 6-0. Okay. There's no other business for that public hearing, so I'm going to close that public hearing. And now I'm going to call to order at 7:09, the March 16, 2022 Borough Council Voting Session. Item number 2 is our Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like that to be led by Mr. McGinnis. Okay. Item number 3 is comments, suggestions, petitions by residents in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda. If anybody would like to speak, please come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. I see none. Okay. We'll move on to item number 4, which is comments by the Borough Council and the mayor. And we're starting, I believe, down there with Mr. McCoy.
Well, I will just say that I am thrilled to see budding daffodils and buds on the trees in Marshall Square Park on my walk this afternoon with my dog. It's about time.
Thank you. You, too. Ms. Vaccaro?
I was away a week or so ago, and it was refreshing to come back to Westchester and walk through town and see the buzz and the excitement of spring starting. I can see the energy moving towards, hopefully, a shutdown of Gay Street and a lot of energy towards a recovery post-COVID. Whether we are officially post or not is perhaps still in question, but I feel a renewed energy, and I am very pleased.
Thank you. Mr. McGinnis?
I'm just looking forward to getting to work and enhancing the borough's reputation of the best place to live, work in Chester County.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Mr. Flynn?
Good evening from the Swedish Ward in the Borough, the Sixth Ward. Normally, I expound all the excitement and goodness that goes on in the Sixth Ward, but tonight I would like to take a moment that we can as a council and as a local town, with our flag being almost the same color as that one over in Ukraine, for the women and children that are being slaughtered by the President of Russia. And I would like to use my time to say a silent prayer. Thank you, Mr. Stefano.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Mr. Allen?
Thank you. No comments this month. Thank you.
Mr. Allen, thank you. Mayor D. Baptiste?
Good evening, everyone. I'm just here to give you a preview. I want to talk about Porch Fest. Porch Fest is an event coming up in May, hopefully, May 20 of this spring. So we want to kick off the summertime and the springtime with music in the air, and I'm working with the Westchester Green Team. So keep the buzz alive about Porch Fest.
Thank you. Okay. I have a couple things. First, I'd like to echo what Mr. Flynn said about taking a moment to really think about what's going on in the Ukraine. And I'm just seeing around me, and in my school particularly, too, and in my community, in my neighborhood down in the Fourth Ward, it's just some fundraisers and people really trying to do something to help. And I know it's hard. I feel like we're essentially helpless over there, but it really is nice to see people really trying to step up. So if you see any fundraisers, people asking to donate, take a few bucks and help out, to help out some of those families that are really suffering over there. Couple events I want to talk about. First, I'll reiterate Porch Fest. I'm actually playing at Porch Fest. I'm not sure where we'll be that day. I don't know if it's all planned out, but my jazz man will be there. I'm excited about that. Another event coming up, it was mentioned last night's meeting with the Public Works, helping the annual stream cleanup, the Goose Creek. It's March 26, which is, I think, two Saturdays. It's a great event. I've done it a couple times in the past. I plan on showing up. You can register at CRCwatersheds.org. And you don't have to sign up, but they provide gloves and stuff if you want to go. And it's just a really amazing event to have all the volunteers come out there. And the amount of trash that is pulled out of the Goose Creek is disgusting, but also amazing to see the amount that we get out of the creek. So if you are able, willing and able to come help out, please, please take some time. It's a couple hours on a Saturday morning. Hopefully, the weather's nice. The other event, as an alumni of Westchester University, is the Jazz Fest, which is starting back up this year, March 23 to 25. If you go to the Westchester University's website, you can find all the dates, and there are all kinds of events to see some really great music. Many of them are free. And as an alumni of some of these ensembles, they're pretty amazing. So if you want something to do and find some local arts in your neighborhood, check that out. That is it. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item number 5. We have a couple items under discussion agenda. Item A is approve the preliminary land development application for 250 East Market Street. I know there was some discussion last night, and it was mostly based around the stormwater issues. And I know that, hopefully, we have somebody who can give us a little bit more information. Hi, how are you?
Hello. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Joe Rusella, and I'm with D.L. Howan Associates. We're the civil engineering firm that has been involved with this project since its inception and, more recently, to present and submit the land development plans for preliminary approval to the borough. We've also worked extensively with the borough, the borough engineer and governmental agencies associated with the approvals that are needed to get the project through and approved for stormwater and some of the work that we're doing associated with Goose Creek. Some of those agencies are FEMA, the Army Corps of Engineers, Chester County Conservation District, PADEP. And we've been working with them on our stormwater design and as well as on the flood-related issues associated with Goose Creek. In particular, the fact that we're removing the structures that are an impediment to the floodwaters that go through the site and by providing the elevated parking deck, allowing the floodwaters to go through, which thereby results in a reduction in the base flood elevation going through through the site. Part of our work is preparation of stormwater calculations and a HECRAZ analysis. HECRAZ analysis takes profile of the creek, and we analyze it with the current conditions, and then we analyze it with the proposed conditions. And the proposed conditions are what results in a reduction in the in the base flood elevation as it goes through the site and it traverses going from east, northeast down through the southwest through the site. We've also provided stormwater management, and that results in taking a good portion of the site, managing it, storing it, and then using a concept called the managed release concept to discharge the stormwater after it's pre-treated and cleaned by way of inlet filters and other devices throughout the site. In conjunction with the development of the plan, as you know, the existing facilities that are there are primarily all impervious. The site is all impervious in its current condition. And the proposed condition, the footprint of the building reduces impervious coverage. So we're gaining some landscape amenities in the form of street trees, shrubs, foundation plantings, and other landscape features that act as a well, first, they reduce the impervious, but they also act as a way to introduce water into the ground, flourish the plants, but also to get back into the soil. We've also taken a parcel between Cedar Alley and East Minor Street, and we're proposing additional landscape amenities, almost like some rain garden water quality issues. So in the overall scope of the project, all of those amenities add to satisfying the requirement for stormwater management and allowing us to move forward with our NPDES permit. In conjunction with all of that, primarily with the use of that, with our managed release concept, it prompts the need for a stormwater waiver because in the ordinance, there's language that talks about infiltration. The managed release concept is an alternate design to infiltration in areas where there's poor soil. Poor soil, in this case, being high groundwater. The managed release concept is also used in soils that are subject to rock or sinkholes or other impediments to naturally allowing the water to infiltrate. It's actually a system that was formulated through DEP and is actually endorsed by DEP and the Conservation District. So it's a statewide regulatory approach to stormwater where there is some issues with the soil. And we're proposing that. And again, it's an accepted way to address stormwater management. And so that is a waiver that's water quality and runoff. The second part of that waiver that we were looking at is also the infiltration. Again, through the development and the utilization of this method of stormwater management, it would be a requirement, and we would be presenting this, and it would be approved by DEP and the Conservation District in conjunction with the NPDS permit. Now, the ordinance, the borough's ordinance, doesn't specifically say that that's a it wants to see infiltration. But again, where you have a site that you can't do that, this is an alternative way of providing that. You still get the same benefits of infiltrating, but you, through different methods that I just mentioned. And again, the higher level of approval comes at the state level. So most municipalities and the borough in the past, when you're employing this, as long as it's approved by DEP and the state, then it's accepted, and the borough engineer recommends it. So it still requires a waiver. Just the ordinance hasn't caught up to the newer requirements for this.
Do you know, thank you for all that. Do you know if this has been waived on other properties in the borough? Or any of the?
I do. It was waived the property that was formerly the Wythe property. And again, where there's limitations in the soil, that's a larger scale, larger than this. There aren't many, too many NPDS projects in the borough because of the scale, but that's a recent one that I'm aware of.
Okay. Questions? Go ahead, Sheila.
I just want to we're talking about stormwater for the one property, and then you're proposing that you also take on the second property. Is the water system addressing both the properties?
So let's say, let's look at the north side, where Rubenstein's is. That's where the underground detention facility is. So what that does is when we look at the stormwater management and we look at what's called point of interest. And point of interest is where all the stormwater goes to. So by compensating or overcompensating for the north property, we balance the site so that we're storing the water for the northern portion, and a portion of the southern site can go undetained. So we're overcompensating to get an overall reduction of the overall site. That answers your question. So.
That did. I appreciate that. But I'm going to just take it a step further. The grassy area that you're proposing?
Yes.
Is that just going to be muddy?
No, I don't believe that it will be muddy. No. It's the grassy portion of the site is primarily on the west side of South Franklin, going down along the strip of the building. And the building goes away from the street. So it's like a, you can picture like a giant triangle. And as we get further down Franklin, the triangle gets wider, and that's where most of our landscaping is. But I don't foresee that being muddy, nor the rectangular area of ground that's between Cedar Alley and East Minor. I see that as primarily being dry, flourishing with plants and flowers. When there's a chance for a storm, be one of our notorious summer storms, where you get a lot of rain over a short period of time, the water will go through there, but I don't think it would wash that away or it would erode that or leave a muddy condition. We're going to get landscaping and plant opportunities right now where there aren't any.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, thank you. So the so the improvements we're seeing is because we're going from a completely impervious plot to some vegetation. And that's where the, I think, 6 inches was cited last night? That's where that's coming from?
Yeah. So what we, the 6 inches is a reduction in the flood, which is separate from the stormwater management. The stormwater management that we're proposing is because it's redevelopment. And the site is absent of any stormwater management at all. So by code, we have to provide stormwater. What we're achieving with removing the buildings and having an open-air parking structure is that we're allowing the floodwaters to go through the site rather than right now where they hit the wall and then they're diverted down Franklin Street. So it's causing, it's an obstruction to the flow path of the water. So we're removing that. And that, in doing that, is a reduction of the floodwaters through the site. Again, stormwater is just a requirement of redevelopment process.
So the stormwater, just as an aside, is it going through where the cars would be parked or underneath that?
Underneath.
You said it was raised, so it's under, okay.
So.
I wanted to make sure.
When you look at our stormwater facility that's shown on the plan,
Could you point that out? Could you point it out?
Oh. Enter with me. It's
So is the idea that if we were to not do the waiver, that you would need to almost spread it out between the north and the south? What would happen if there was no waiver?
Well, if there wasn't a waiver, we would still have to, we would still do the storm system. The waiver is just saying that we don't have the ability to infiltrate. So we'd still have the ability to manage. The waiver just is to say that we can't do standard infiltration because the soils don't support it. So the waiver is just saying that, okay, in lieu of the infiltration, we're going to do this managed release system where we're still storing the water, we're still treating the water. The infiltration component is done through internally, where it's filtered out and then slowly released back into the water rather than back into the ground because the ground can't accept it. So the waiver isn't saying that we're not it's just really a difference of how we're managing the water. The ordinance says that it all needs to go in the soil, which it can. So again, I don't think it's setting a precedence or it's not doing anything that we haven't provided before, only in sites that aren't conducive for the infiltration component.
I mean, you know, to be transparent, like, this is my ward, that East Minor Street, we've lost several properties that have either come down on their own or have had to be demolished. And I'm just extremely concerned. It's hard for me, representing this ward, to try to get on board with signing waivers when flooding's been getting worse over the past handful of years especially. Does this building exist without those first two waivers? Is that possible?
I think the building still would exist. The waiver is just really on a process of stormwater, recognizing that now there isn't any at all. So in redevelopment, we're getting a benefit of first lowering the flood elevation by removing an obstruction and providing stormwater where there isn't any and reducing impervious. So from the borough's objectives in redevelopment, we're accomplishing them, that our system is just in need of a waiver because of the soil that it's in isn't just supportive. Still providing stormwater management, which is needed, which we are doing. So I think the overall you're achieving by this redevelopment, improvements that aren't there today.
And I, you know, just to get, because I don't want to take too much time on this, to get to the heart of my question. If we did not approve the waiver, it sounds like the building can still exist. Under that scenario, are we getting more than or less than 6 inches of reduction if we were to not approve the waiver and you had to move forward with a different option?
I think that you're still going to get a reduction in the floodwater, but without the waiver, I want to answer this, in that we're still going to have, provide stormwater management. So if, let's say, the project didn't move forward, then we would be, I think, not in as good as a place should be with the building because the stormwater that's being proposed is again, it's meeting the ordinance. It's meeting the ordinance on water quality and taking the pollutants out. It's just how it's getting put back into the environment.
So if I mean, would that, if we didn't do the waiver, would there? What I'm concerned about is, you know, representing the second ward and signing something that is going to, you know, potentially increase what they would get otherwise. And I understand that what you're doing is helping, but I just have some hesitation if, for example, let's say if I said, or if we said no to these waivers, the building happens, and it's a 12-inch reduction. You know, I would much rather have that than sign these waivers and then have to answer for an extra 6 inches of water in somebody's house.
I think still that there's a, the understanding of the water. And the water is just associated with the creek. The water that we're managing is is associated with the stormwater management that's necessary for the development. So this reduction of the creek, our site is reducing that in the redevelopment and putting the stormwater management in. So I don't know how not approving the waiver would affect anything. I think that the, again, the waiver, you'll still get the same system, and you're still getting a system that meets all the requirements.
And yeah, I'm not trying to make life harder for you at all. I'm just curious, if we approve the waiver, we get 6 inches. If we don't approve the waiver, do we still get 6 inches?
I'd say, I have to say the answer is yes because that, you know, that 6 inches is just associated with water that's coming from somewhere else, from upstream.
So they say Ida, Hurricane Ida, was like a 100-year hurricane. So this area floods out a lot, as to Nick's point. It floods out a lot. You have the creek right there, parallel to these apartments that you want to build. So my concern, and it's always been a tenuous area. So my concern is, will this management program work for a 100-year flood? Because this area floods out a lot, and we want to make sure that you're improving the area.
The simple answer is that it works for the site itself. Okay? So the flooding that occurs through here is a result of what happens upstream. And as the waters upstream come through, they're coming through with such velocity that it creates the flooding condition. For our site, in a post-development versus the pre, we're going to slow and store that water so that you would see an improvement to the floodwaters that come through. I can't say that the floodwaters on the upstream side, maybe what's coming from other municipalities or, you know, different elevations, the improvement to that flooding condition is improved by the removal of the buildings that are there now. The walls of those buildings are like a dam that affects the water. So with the redevelopment, those floodwaters will come through in a manner that will alleviate and reduce the overall water that comes through the site now. So it is an improvement, and it is a reduction.
And so those cars that are going to be parked there during a storm coming up wouldn't have to be moved to the street?
There's an emergency plan in the event that there's a flood. And the cars that are on the south side of the site are the profile of the stream that runs through there is not water that would be, would be like running under the car, not necessarily flooding the car, lifting it. By removing the building, again, we foresee that those cars wouldn't experience being submerged. Where we are through the profile of the stream that flows through our site would only be maybe ankle-deep going through. Where we are through the, the profile of the stream that flows through our site would only be maybe ankle-deep going through that when the floodwaters go through the site. The flooding that occurs under the, under the train br- bridge, if there were cars parked on the street, they would maybe subject to flooding, but not so much the cars that are underneath the building.
Mr. McCoy.
Yeah, so the culvert underneath, are you making any improvements to, to that?
The improvements that we're making to the culvert is, is to monitor it, keep it clean and to keep, to remove the debris or anything that, that would collect underneath of it. As, with our meetings with DEP and the Army Corps, it's just to maintain its integrity. So we're, we're not altering it. The existing culvert, on the end of the culvert, we're adding to it to get it beyond the building, but we're not, we're not touching it, we're just preserving it.
The capacity of the, the culvert is not, not changing?
That, that's correct, yes.
Matt Adams with 250 East Market. Good evening, everyone. So just to add to that, so one of the items that came up during our investigation of that culvert, which we've been working on for the last couple of years, was there's some existing utilities that bisects the culvert? So if you can imagine, you're kind of standing in the culvert, you have a sewer line coming straight through it and another bisecting sewer line coming. So you've created these obstructions. So we, we've agreed during the planning commission to kind of work with Public Works and your staff to kind of look at investigating rerouting some of those. Because what's happening is essentially like shopping carts are coming down, getting stuck, then it's coming up over Cedar Alley and then, and then, and then flooding the streets. So as much as water that we can to kind of flow through that, it doesn't create those obstructions. Because, you know, I think they've tried a number of different things in the row to kind of create some type of mesh netting, but ultimately when, you know, a fallen tree or shopping cart comes down, that, that's where the issue is. So we're going to work on that as far as trying to improve it.
So some of the existing flooding issues are probably obviously created by that debris?
Yeah, exactly. And you're just creating like an obstruction that, you know, ul- ultimately what we'd like to do is try to create something where there's, you know, a plant in place where that can at least move freely during a storm event. So if that requires us to relocate some of those stormwater, excuse me, sewer pipes, to investigate, see how we can. Again, it's just a matter of time before something heavy enough comes through there and breaks a sewer line. And then all of a sudden we have a much bigger issue.
So since obviously the building is going up and there's probably not going to be any opportunity soon afterwards to, to make any improvements to that culvert, to, to enlarge it. Would enlarging it do anything for, you know, I realize the upstream issues are not your problem to deal with, but since, you know, you are working on the, the site, would that do anything to, to alleviate an ongoing problem?
Yeah, the, when we met with the DEP and the Army Corps, the, the size of the enlargement of the culvert to, to change that would, would be so significantly larger, more so than what it would, the benefits of, of what it would be. So the, the decision was leaving it in, in place is, is safer and better to do than trying to alter it.
Can I ask about your system that you're adding? Like the culvert with things going through it and getting in the way? What happens when there is too much water? You're having a slow release out of there, there is too much water. What happens? And then, and then the second part to that is mosquitoes and, and growth of different things in these pipes.
Sure, the, if you're referring to our stormwater facility, so there's a de-watering time that has to, it has to de-water in 48 hours, which would empty out. The interesting thing with a, with a storm, as, as we know, is that when we get the high-intensity rain, there's a, there's, there's a level for which the, the storm goes through and the water passes through. So the, the emptying of the, of the basin doesn't correspond to the, how the storm works. So in, in a, in a, in a storm or flood situation, tho- those waters would go through. Then as, as the waters go down to where the creek is now, the basin's de-watering over time, so they're not battling each other. So there is, there is, there's not standing water in that system and there's not the chance for mosquitoes or any, anything like that. And it, it, you know, it empties out, it has to empty out, we have to demonstrate that. So I don't believe those conditions would exist.
Any other questions? Mr. Flynn?
Adam, can you address the verbiage of what a waiver is? The, Joe, Joe was, was trying to explain it, but the, hearing it from somebody else may, may sink it in a little bit better. Why, why are you asking for a waiver on the, by switching the two systems?
Yeah, so I think right now that the way that the ordinance states is that it's required to infiltrate into the soils. So like, for example, the Wyatt site, which we were in here last year, we requested the exact same waiver to do a managed release concept, which, again, when you have a developed area that, and again, that was environmental specific with some certain issues and high groundwater, that you really didn't have the ability to infiltrate. But really, the, the goal was during a storm event, to hold as much water and to slow release over a 48-hour period to, you know, to, to alleviate those surges of water that are flowing into the streets and flooding cars. So again, the managed release concept, I think, is something that was created by DEP and has been adopted by a number of municipalities, it just, it really hasn't caught up yet. And in our discussions with the borough and the engineers, that ultimately that is something they would look to, to try to introduce into the borough, just because you have compacted soils, old industrial areas that you don't have that ability with unfortunately, high groundwater. So in this scenario, it's very specific to the site. And that the ordinance, you know, like a lot of ordinances were adopted based on other suburban municipalities. And, you know, over time, they slowly kind of adopt to kind of, you know, this new concept, which wasn't introduced by any individual municipality, which was more of a DEP concept. And, you know, historically, we'd say we can't infiltrate, we have karst geology. In the case of sinkholes, we don't want you to infiltrate water into these areas to create more sinkholes. So we would just say, we're not going to do any infiltration. Nowadays, it's a, hey, we have a managed release concept. Essentially, that, that basin underground is lined, so it doesn't really interact with the soils below. So if there are environmental pollutants, you're not, you're not promoting the soil-to-groundwater connection. You know, unfortunately, in the borough, we deal with a lot of like off-site waters coming from other areas that have, you know, pollutants and whatnot. So very specific to the site. You know, again, the waiver is something that we've gotten on multiple projects, not only in the borough, but in other municipalities, and it's something the DEP strongly recommends in areas that you don't.
So to clarify the wa- the waiver, you're supposed to let the water soak into the ground. Okay, so you can't do that. So you're, the, the wave is that you're going to build the collection system to replace the soaking into the ground. In order to put this, the, the, the vessel in the ground, you need us to wave the soaking into the ground.
Correct.
I'm a very simple guy from Darby. Okay.
I think that clarifies it for me a little bit, because that was kind of confusing. Was there any public comment on this? Any other comments or questions from council? And if not, possibly a motion, okay.
Sorry, I'm going to be quick here. This is preliminary, right? And what is, what is, what does that mean in this instance? Come back to this in two months, six months?
We come back when we, when we've satisfied all of the other criteria. So it, it's a few months that you would see it again, but we do have to come back through for final. And we would have to demonstrate that we've met all of the criteria that are in the review letters and produce all of those documents that, that said all the other agencies have reviewed and approved our design.
Gotcha.
As far as the project goes, I mean, we have just as much concern as the, the community does. Obviously, we don't want to have a project that has flooding cars and whatnot. So we're going to do everything we can to work with Public Works to try to get, you know, what we can do within that culvert, you know, kind of solved, you know, as far as utilities and, and different strategies. So we're trying, trying to do the best we can within that, you know, within the confines of that existing culvert.
Sean? Yeah, just while we're on the topic of waivers and in the interest of transparency, there are two other waivers on your cover sheet. Would you mind speaking to the right-of-way and the clear-sight triangle waivers you're looking for, just so?
Yeah.
You understand?
So there, there are a to- total of four waivers. The first two we talked about, which had to do with the stormwater. The street system and the street width, it was just determined with the planning commission that they were comfortable with the street width of Franklin Street and not to pursue additional right-of-way. And, and then the last waiver had to do with site distance and site triangles. And we've provided the information to the, to the TPD, the traffic engineer for the borough, to satisfy the, those that, that all, that the triangle itself is less, but the site distance that you see, we're able to maintain. So Planning Commission recommended those waivers, but that's what they are.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on any of that? Mayor?
Yeah, I just had a question with the right-of-way for what? You said?
Oh, the right-of-way width. So the, the planning commission agreed that the right-of-way width for Franklin Street was adequate and it didn't need to, to be any wider because it would be, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be consistent with the, the network of streets above it and below it. Meaning Franklin on the north side of Market and Franklin on, in south of the site.
I might be able to clarify, because we did ask that question in the, the, the meeting. This would normally require a 50-foot right-of-way, so an additional 10 feet. But as to, I'm sorry, your last name?
Joe Rossella. Rossella.
Joe. The, what he's saying is, south and north, the street, the network streets are all an hour or so. It really wouldn't make any difference.
Okay, if there's no more questions or comments, then I, I think a motion would be in order.
What kind of motion?
To approve the preliminary land development application for 250 East Market Street.
So read.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
I'll second.
Mr. McCoy seconds. Any other discussion or comments?
Discussion?
Get.
I'd like to, I, I said it yesterday, I'd like to see them put community gardens there. So I'd like that to be a part of the land development for the other side, if they're going to do anything with it.
Is that something that would be included in the, in this land development agreement? Yeah, I don't think.
It was on the other, it was on the other one, that's why I'm mentioning it. But if not, he mentioned the other, the, the, in some of the plans, the park across the street.
To the septic lot?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'd be happy to consider that. And then I did talk to Eli today, we do own another parcel along Minor Street that we're looking to try to maybe do something there as well, so we can kind of talk offline about that. But, you know, again, if we're able to kind of solidify something with the Wawa, or excuse me, the septic lot, we'd be happy to kind of engage with that. But I, I get, I don't know how we'd incorporate it into this plan because it is something that the borough currently leases. So, you know, we'd be happy to, you know, fund that project, it's just a matter of making sure. I think there was a sublease or lease with the Westchester Railroad as well on these.
Yeah, I don't think they can include it in this plan because they don't actually own that property.
Right.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, Mr. Metric, would you call the question, please?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey is absent and Mr. Stefano?
Yes, motion carries six zero. Moving on to item B, which is approve Borough of Westchester meeting room policy. We didn't really get to look at this last night, it was put right on the discussion. And I think there was some discussion about the actual fees themselves, that, right, Mr. Allen?
Yeah, I think to streamline this, I'd like just to make a motion that we approve this at $40 instead of $50.
That, that is to, to, to use a room, right? To use it in the building here, right? Okay.
Second.
Question?
Yeah.
Why you want to reduce the, the income stream for the borough?
It was originally 30 and 75, if I'm not mistaken. So $30 for folks who are inside the borough and 75 for folks who are outside the borough. And I would imagine that a higher percentage of people renting the room were inside the borough. So I just figured it made sense to float closer to the $30 number as opposed to, you know, being more in the middle.
Thank you.
That's the average of the two. Anybody else have thoughts on that? So the, what you're saying, just to ask a question, is $50 is, depends, doesn't care where you're, if you're in the borough, a resident or out to the borough. Well, you guys decided it was $50 is the fee, and you're just saying that that $40 is that? Any other thoughts on that? The motion is second, is, is made and seconded to be $40, so. Okay, all right, if there's no discussion, we'll, we'll call the question.
Mr. Flynn?
No.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey is absent and Mr. Stefano?
Yes, motion carries five one. Okay, moving on to item C, approve the Gay Street closure, 2022, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, 24 hours, seven days. Uh, we had some discussion last night about this. The big issue obviously being this year is the Market Street work by Pico. I know Mr. O'Brien's here, I'm sure we're going to have questions for you if you. But one of the things I, I was thinking about with this is when does Pico actually get around to, to doing the Market Street work? And who knows? I feel like they have some kind of timelines, but it takes them a while. So I feel like if we're, if we're not going to approve this and say, we're going to, oh, keep Gay Street open because we know that Market Street will one day be closed in the near future in the summer, I feel like that's not really, I don't know, I'd, I'd rather err on the other way and let's close it. Let's, let's deal with that when we, when we have to, which may not be till, I don't know, mid to late summer at this point. So that's, those are my thoughts on it. I'd rather, I'm in favor of doing this, but. The thoughts, Mr. McCoy, get?
Yeah, just one thing, I, I guess what I heard, and I understand Pico is not especially on time, but if we were to, instead of making it Memorial Day, if you made it July 4th or right before July 4th, because what I heard last night was June timeframe is when they're, they were at least now planning the work.
Yeah, I, I would be hesitant on that just because I feel as soon as like this week, I bet you the restaurants or people are sitting outside right now, they want to, people want to sit outside when it's nice weather. Um, and I feel like you're, if we're doing this for the benefit of the businesses, this is, this is prime time, right? It's coming up real soon, so. But I also, yeah, I feel like if they are saying June, it'll probably be August, depending, but I don't want to bad, badmouth Pico, but.
I got off a phone call this morning with a colleague in Hong Kong and there's another wave and there are more people dying. And I don't want to see us shut down the street for a possible three-day paving project and then run into another situation where we're wearing masks and desperately trying to eat out outside. I just, I want things to be ready, I want businesses to face the reality that, yes, we're going to have to ask them to move everything for three days. And yes, we're going to have to figure out how to rope off all this walking traffic for three days. But we're going to figure it out and I believe that all of us can come together and do that. And I think it should be shut down. Thank you.
I'm Mr. Flynn.
The, I've never been for 24/7, ever. Because commerce has to be done Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And Uptown is dead Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. Matter of fact, a lot of our businesses aren't even open Monday and Tuesday, Uptown, the restaurants. They, they seem to flourish Thursday to Sunday and 24/7. We didn't have the opportunity to voice our opinion because PennDOT and the Federal Highway Administration told us before, it had to be 24/7 and barricaded like a, a construction site. Now that we have the ability to bob and weave a little bit, shutting down the, the, the block again and causing all that disruption in commerce, trash pickup, deliveries, trucks double parked on High Street, it, it's a, it's a total nightmare. So I've, I've never been for 24/7.
Mr. Stefano, I, I just want to say I echo those same sentiments now with all these projects going on. And then we, we forget about the Zouken project that's going to happen on Gay Street right there by Tecca. So that's going to be an issue because they can't work at night, whereas Pico can. The other issue is the, the parking revenue loss that could be up to 35,000. that could be up to $35,000 a month. We don't know if that revenue is being transferred to the other garages or other meters or not. So we need to take that into consideration. And then, you know, again, it's a public safety issue. For the most part, is the fire chief and the police chief are against closing down five days a week. I am for shutting it down on weekends, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, where that loss of parking revenue isn't going to be as much to Councilman Flynn's point. Monday through Wednesday, there's very little activity uptown, if at all. And then, not to mention, we're going to have to go through paving. So I do think that at least if we do it on the weekend, it's going to be consistent. And my final point is this. The majority of the businesses on Gay Street do not want it shut down five days a week. And that's according to the survey that John had, for the most part. And if you talk to them, again, it impacts commerce as well as deliveries. So I'm against shutting down for five days a week, but I am for an alternative of Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Do we, do we have information on the feasibility of doing that? Because I feel like that was an option, but I never got any kind of definitive answer on whether like a Thursday or Friday through Sunday could work. Is Public Works able to do that? Do we have the barriers that could handle that? Is that, is that an option?
Yeah, we have the hardware, we have the people, we have the equipment. We don't have, what we would be doing is, if we did it for 14 weekends, is multiplying the labor by 14. Do it. Whereas before, we just put it up once and took it down once.
Sure. Okay. I wonder if that would offset by parking, though, like what Mr. McGinnis was talking about. Okay. Mr. Allen, we haven't heard from you. What are your thoughts on this?
I support what I think is a simple solution, which is just keeping it closed.
Mr. O'Brien, anything you want to chime in on this?
So there is no good answer here on this. Obviously, I think we've heard a lot of good points on this. The bid would like to see this shut down in some way. I really do think that the best path forward is a weekend closure. We'll see when Market Street is closed during the daytime. A lot of issues with deliveries that we can't put off that will go to side streets and will clog things up and getting those delivery trucks out of here. I worry the impact that this has on our retail community. I mean, obviously, the restaurants will find a way, but I do worry for the retail side of things. Another issue which, and maybe the borough manager can shed some light on is, all of this is kind of moot if we don't have local control of this back. The borough passed that resolution, but we don't have control of the road back yet. So that's kind of a linchpin for all of this to begin with. So I don't know if we know where we're at with that.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. I did receive the document from PennDOT today, which is the last bit of documentation that has to go to Harrisburg. So that will be sent back tomorrow. It's just a validation of the borough's desire to go through with the abandonment. I just wanted, I checked to make sure that, before I signed that document, that Pico was still going to be on the hook to do the repaving on Gay Street, even if we transferred ownership. And we did verify that was the case. So I just didn't get around to signing it today. That goes off tomorrow. And I've been told it could take two weeks. I've been told it could take two months for Harrisburg's main office at the DOT to approve that. So I can get a better answer for you and send it to you by email as soon as I know more.
Okay.
And one of my biggest concerns is to make this successful, we need to have a lot of certainty to be able to communicate it to customers, but also for the businesses to buy in, they need certainty of what we're going to do. And I worry that's a certainty that we cannot provide on either end to make this successful. And that's ultimately what I want, is to see this be successful at the end of the day. So what has my stomach in knots is whichever way we go, an ability to actually implement that.
Okay. Mr. Gore, do you have any idea of the timeline of the Zookin Hotel, like when they're going to demo or do anything there? Okay. Because I, I know, I feel like it was before I was even on council for years, this has been a project that I'm like, just the idea that they're actually going to do it, hesitant to believe them at this point. I don't know, you know, I've been waiting for a long time for that. But if they do, that's going to be a major, major issue with all of this.
And if it's helpful, I can walk through what Pico's plan is as of yesterday.
I think everybody should hear that. Yeah.
Okay. So they have now moved to work on High Street. They're going to be doing High Street between Chestnut and Market Street at night from 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM. It'll be a full closure when they're on High Street. That is part of what they're calling the Harmony Ford Project, which is all the work that we've seen on Gay Street so far. When that is concluded, they will then move to do Harmony One, which is on Market Street from New all the way to Market, or I'm sorry, from New all the way to High Street on Market and also on Church from now from Market down to Minor Street. So understand that, yes, Market Street will not, you know, there's a chance that, you know, when they're going to start the Market Street work. But if Gay Street's closed, there's also going to be moments, it'll be nighttime, but that High Street will be closed. So even if it's not Market, it will be High. So this is going to impact us no matter what. And I've just, my whole goal here is to endeavor to be transparent with council, with the public, with the businesses on putting all the cards on the table, even if it kind of doesn't go the way I was hoping when we started this process.
Yeah. And I think my biggest fear is that we don't do it at all, like close it at all. And I think we've set a precedent, and it's now becoming essentially an expectation of the residents and people that visit. And I think it's a great expectation. It brings people in. So to just not do it at all would be, I think, not in our best interest. But I think 24/7 is also sounding like more and more really, a really undertaking that's going to create a lot of problems or, which it may not, but we don't know that, so.
I would encourage, and we talked about this during public safety, and I've talked to a couple offline, to apply for grant funding. And there is a grant funding line through the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission to do planning studies along this end. Deadline is April 22nd. There's no local match, so it's basically free money to apply for. Because I do think the next step is a more holistic, long-term view of what this road should be. And a study that can kind of give us that path would be important.
Mr. Stefano?
Yeah?
The, from New Street to High Street sits squarely in the Sixth Ward. And the positive part of deliveries on Market Street is that you have an alley behind from almost High Street, except you have the Church Street for the restaurants up there. They could take all the deliveries in Willerton Alley. Then you have Courthouse Alley for like Pietro's and Spicy Pig and all those on that one other side. So the deliveries won't be as hardly pressed as the ones that were on Gay Street where there's no back alleys. You know, like Ryan's side, there's really, really no back alleys for anybody to get down, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Stefano?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Boy.
I mean, to your earlier point about the parking, could that offset? Is that a, you know, calculation we can do? You know, the number of spaces? If, could that potentially offset the cost for labor to take those down Thursdays?
Yeah, the most recent data going back the last couple of years and into 2019 tells me that we are not, even at our busiest downtown, at such a critical mass of parking that losing the 61 spaces would, we, to lose, we have, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but that 61 spaces is such a small margin. There's 1,000 spaces in the two garages. So just the garage spaces, 61 is less than, less than 1%. So that's not affecting the needle. What, what I think's happening is people who want to come to town, can't park on Gay, find another space somewhere else. What we have to be careful about is people don't want to come to town because it's too much of a pain. And I don't have a good sense of what normal looks like because we just have such goofy data the last two years, two and a half years.
Yeah, and my personal experience has only been during the pandemic, so I too don't have a normal level.
What do we need to do to have you go for the grant funding?
Just work with first F. It's, I know where that grant funding application is. There might be a period where, you know, in the April meeting, council will need to pass a resolution that they're authorizing this. But like I said, there's no local match. So you've done that before. It's pretty pro forma, whether it's Sean or somebody that Sean would designate. I have, you know, a good feeling we can get that application in.
Yeah.
My, the thing that I keep thinking about is Harmony, we're losing a major eastbound lane of traffic and north-south on High. I feel like some of the major, majorly traffic streets in the borough, east-west are Chestnut, Gay, Market, Minor. Three out of four go west. So to me, the idea of losing Gay Street, we were, like, losing Minor definitely is going to be tough because you're losing that westbound. That's going to happen no matter what. And so I understand that, like, traffic will spill over. But the fact that we still have Chestnut, we still have Minor, makes me think that, that we're going to be fine.
Yeah. I mean, it's also, I mean, and Sean kind of alluded to it, there is a certain psychological element that we have to be concerned about because our town does not thrive just on the residents. It thrives on those in the greater Westchester area coming into town. And when they feel that, you know, traffic is such just a pain to get around and navigate, every corner they turn is, you know, some new obstacle, there is a potential frustration to just throw up your hands and be like, I'm not going. I'm just going to wait till.
I still do that. I still want to turn right when I can't, so.
So that's, you know, just.
I mean, I think that's how it is already, you know?
Yeah.
Sure. And just to go back to the parking, you know, for 60 spaces, four days a week, even if they only got $10 a day each, that's $2,400. I mean, I don't know what it would be a week to have Public Works do that, but what would that figure be? What would the weekly additional labor cost to have Public Works remove barriers and put them up every week on a Thursday and a Monday or Thursday?
That's a good question. I don't have a number for you yet.
And, and just so, Sean, with Public Works, you know, the concrete bin blocks that we have put in place these last couple of years, we've had to hire a truck from Mainline Concrete to maneuver those. Because, you know, at the point, I've always been told that we don't have the ability within Public Works to move those type of barriers. So the question is also, can we use a lighter barrier? Because that was kind of part of that conversation. At least it was historically. That's changed. We could look into those details, yeah.
Does this need to be decided at this meeting? Then can I make a motion and then we table this to the next meeting?
I think that's a good idea. I think we have a lot of questions here, and we seem to be fairly split. So I think if we can get, if we're going to table it, I think we need, what we need is answers on the costs. We need answers on the actual barriers that we're using and the feasibility of moving those barriers. And what else am I? And timelines, maybe we'll get some updates at that point if we give ourselves a month.
But is it safe to say council's temperatures more towards a weekend closure?
I feel like that, I feel like it sounds like there's about three of us at least that want that. I think Ms. Dorsey does too. You know, I don't want to speak for her, she's not here, but I feel like that's what she was alluding to.
So my question to you, John, is we've discussed this for three months now, and I know the business owners were trying to gauge the temperature and know how to plan accordingly.
Yes.
So if we push this back another month, will they be actually able to plan accordingly if we don't vote to April? And then we're talking about doing this for Memorial Day? Because the summer months have been so hot. At least last year, July and August were so hot, which I think that was one of the reasons why nobody was out.
Right.
You know, they were just steaming hot. And then the weekends were rainy, and so a lot of them got rained out.
Yes.
Again, so I'm just wondering, will they actually have time to move forward if we push it back again? We might not know all the answers next month. And if, you know, if the thought is to go forward, at least with partial closure, if that's the, if that's the will of the council, should we act upon that or should we wait another month?
I think that they will be annoyed, of course. I mean, you're annoyed, like, we're all going to be annoyed that we don't have an answer here. I think their ability to set up, I mean, for those who have participated, is pretty forward. I think, but like I said, the other questions for how long this can exist for, there's a lot of questions that are also going to ask that even if, you know, council were to say, let's go with the weekends, we still need to plan out. So I mean, like I said, it doesn't seem like there's a good answer.
That would give them still about a month and a half to plan.
I mean, the restaurants, like, and that's who we're talking about for a large part of this, already have, you know, tables, chairs lined up. They have their equipment. They kind of have what they know of their layout to be. So I don't foresee that being a huge hurdle. I mean, they're going to be annoyed when I talk to them that there's not an answer. But it's going to be a conversation between me and them relaying all the problems that I just relayed to you.
Got it. I mean, they can be annoyed all they want, but we're trying to help them out. We are. All right. So this has been tabled. We're going to move on. We'll discuss this again. I think that's a good, I think that's a good call so we can make a really, the best decision for everybody. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
So maybe we could ask you to go back to the business owners if the cost for Public Works is $1,000 a week to do that. Is that something they'd be willing?
Yeah, and if you'd like, I can lay out a specific question to them. Weekends or 24/7? Because, you know, some of them who said, when we talk about, 80% of them wanted it to happen, you know, then you broke it down into whether that was weekends or a full closure. Does that change those numbers at all, knowing that it can be only one or the other?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
And don't we have to depend, wait and hear from PennDOT? Because they can say, you're not shutting nothing down.
Yeah, that's true. Which will hopefully have that answer by next week.
Yeah, hopefully.
Yes. All right. I appreciate your time. Yeah, go ahead.
My concern with this, let's offer a new option now, is we're really late. And I'm not, I'm worried about the business owners, but I'm worried about the overall plan. And we already had some grasp on the 24/7 plan, which is, and, and, you know, PennDOT, and we had a handle on it to a certain extent. And so rewriting it and pushing it closer and closer and closer, it's just, it's just very scary. I think it would be much more comfortable for everyone if we could move ahead.
Yeah, I understand that. I think we are in a little bit different situation this year, it's been, having done it twice. We have a little bit of better understanding of it. I think the first year we did it was so, it was very chaotic last minute. So I feel like we have that we, if we waited that month, I, it's not ideal, but I think we could, I think we'll be all right. All right, so that's tabled, we're gonna move on, thank you so much, John, appreciate it. Um, moving, so that's tabled, item D, consider changing the meeting time of Borough Council Work Session and Voting Session. Uh, the proposal was for 7:00 PM. Um, I talked to, uh, Ms. Dorsey, she had reached out and she had some concerns. Um, and her proposal of, as a compromise would be at 6:30.
Right.
I think that's fine. If everybody's in agreeance, then, or if not, then somebody, you know, then I think it'd be appropriate, somebody to, uh, um, make a motion to change the meeting time of Borough Council Work Session and Voting Sessions to 6:30 PM.
Uh, since I initiated the, uh, the, the change, um, and, and do, in light of, uh, Ms. Dorsey's, uh, inability to get here on time because of work, uh, I would like to make, uh, change the motion from 6:00 PM to 6:30 PM for our work sessions and for our voting sessions.
I'll second.
Good, motion's made by Mr. Flynn, seconded by Mr. McGinnis. Uh, any discussion or comments?
Did have one suggestion. We were thinking maybe, um, to start this in May. What does council think about that, giving, giving us a month cycle to get, get the word out and get it, get it posted?
Yeah, and there's probably like informational stuff you guys have to update websites and things. Yeah, that, I think that makes sense. Should we, do we have to put that into the motion?
Yeah, we could make, it could amend the, someone could amend.
Make a motion that we amend it until May, uh, May timeframe, that we start at 6:30.
Are you okay with that amendment, Mr. Flynn? Okay, got that? Okay, cool. Any other discussion or comment? Okay, uh, Mr. Metric, would you please call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
And Mr. Stefano?
Yes, motion carries six zero. Woo hoo, we're on to the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Flynn, motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. McGinnis, any questions or comment? All right, Mr. Metric, please call that question.
Uh, Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes. And carries six zero, and I don't see any other business, any other business? Seeing none, this motion, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.